Roll call. Sarah?
Here.
John?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
I'm here and Doug has excused for this evening. What will he do?
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion items that are not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. I assume everyone's got an item on the agenda in the audience there? Wonderful. Okay. And did everyone sign into the podium out there? There's a sign sheet. Okay. Moving on. Five A, discussion and possible action in reference to an appeal to council's decision to remove dog from city limits.
Thank you, counsel. Just wanted to follow up after the last council meeting. It was a little chaotic with me not being in attendance and over the phone and stuff like that, too. Since the last council meeting, we followed up. Brandon and I met, had a discussion over that, and since had conversation and discussed with Cory, discovering that there was confusion on the time and date for the hearing that was originally held last time. So after discussion with Brandon, we elected to put it back on the agenda for tonight to ensure we give Cory due process for that, from that standpoint. So just because it's another meeting and who knows if who was here last time and who wasn't, I'm just gonna go over the details again. But basically, on January 31st, our office took a report of a dog bite at 129 East Main Street, apartment number E. At that time, the report, the officer took the report, the dog was alleged, belonged to Cory Green, identified as her dog, and was tied out on a chain and extended beyond her doorway area. It's a very small area. I don't know the measurements on that or anything, but it was able to extend into the common driveway, alleyway of the apartment complex there, where it bit a subject on the hand, causing injury to his hand. Through that portion, we tried, we contacted Cory to follow up and get vaccination records for the different things, was able to find it, or confirmed with her that we did not have vaccination records. The dog was not registered with the City of Lisbon at the time. And to my knowledge to date, we still do not have vaccination records for that. We attempted the quarantine process. Cory was, we worked with Cedar Valley. That was a little difficult process with some other issues going on. Cory was advised on keeping the dog contained with herself over that 10-day watch period as we go through from that standpoint, too. Upon review of everything from the officer's investigation, it did not, you know, there was nothing that indicated that the dog was provoked or attacked, you know, approached or anything. It was a subject that was walking through the common portion of the roadway alley that accesses that apartment complex. The dog came at that person, bit them in the hand, and left it from there. So that's pretty much the information we have at that point, resulting in injury to his hand from the bite from there, so.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion?
I assume we've got a whole group of people out here. Do you have a spokesperson?
Well, we all have a few.
Anybody here?
I mean, a couple of us have a few things we'd like to say.
Yes.
Please step up to the mic and state your name.
Thank you. My name is Jason Owen. I'd like to start by thanking you for this audience. I know there was some confusion about the date that the city saw council, the city council saw fit to allow this as a, I think, a testament to you guys. We'd like to thank you for that. My name is Jason Owen. I have known True and Cory Green for over two years, and in that time, I have gotten to know them extremely well. Quite frankly, True is one of the sweetest and gentlest dogs that I have ever met. He possesses strength without insolence, courage without ferocity, and loyalty to his master Cory without fail. He is well-mannered and extremely obedient, and a real joy to be around. In the two years that I've known True, I have never observed any aggression toward anyone. It's quite the opposite. Around people that he does not know, he is quiet and reserved, patiently waiting for a signal that the situation is safe for him. He embodies the saying that it's not the breed, it's the owner. And Cory Green has raised True with love and discipline to be the magnificent dog that he is. They love each other, and they deserve to be together. And it is my sincere hope that the city will consider this evidence and the testimony that's about to come through, and see this in a different light, and see fit to reunite what I consider a truly fantastic dog with the best pity mom that he could possibly have. Thank you.
My name's Cory Green. I'd just like to thank you guys for allowing me the chance to speak today. I've lived in this community for almost two decades and feel a really sense of pride for the community, and it's one of my favorite things about living in this town. I love this town. In those 20 years, I've always had a dog. Living alone, but having a dog gives a sense of security. We've lived in the same apartment for over three years now without any issue other than the random pat on the head from the neighbor. Unfortunately, the clinic where True was vaccinated permanently closed during COVID. And I have reached out to all of the doctors and nurses in this clinic trying to find his papers, but none can be found. My only other copies of those records were lost in a very abrupt and abusive move I was forced to make in the middle of the night and quickly. Restraining orders were issued, and I had no resources of getting my papers back from my寄居屋, I would say. I exhausted all of my efforts trying to require the previous records, and more than willing to have True's vaccinations updated if it means he is willing and allowed to register and come home. Immediately upon that incident occurring, I took action moving his cable out of the public walkway. Up until this point, in the three years we've been there, it had been a non-issue. There was absolutely no excuse for the dog's actions that day at all. And I can assure you that it did not come from a police stimulus or aggression. True was startled. It's that simple. A dog has no voice to speak up and say, "Please back up. You're making me uncomfortable." If somebody was in your space and startled you, you would have the voice to say that. Even after brandishing a gun at my dog and myself, I still brought the neighbor into my home and cleaned his wounds. The neighbor had no hesitation walking into my house knowing the dog was inside. During this time, True was asleep in his kennel, not anxious, not even caring that the neighbor's in my house. The neighbor he just bit. I pride myself on only owning well-behaved animals. Being a vet tech and working with animals for years, I know the stigma that this dog brings. I do everything in my effort to bring positive overview to them, to prove to others that a dog is just a dog, no matter his size, color, or breed. Back in August of last year, True was attacked in the middle of the street by two dogs while we were out for a walk. These dogs were unrestrained and came into a public space. The only reason I bring this up is for example of True's character. True was on a leash, and if he were vicious, those dogs would have been harmed. However, they had no marks on them. My dog had three punctured wounds, two in his legs and one in his chest. True did exactly what I have trained him to do, which is to stay between me and whatever threat may be there to protect me. This is his only purpose in life. It's the only thing in his mind that he lives for. Maybe some cuddle time, but... As a side note, one of those two dogs that had attacked True had bitten a two-year-old in the face less than six months prior, and was still left unrestrained to attack my dog. True is known by most of the people in this town, whether on a personal level or just by sight. He goes into the bank, he goes into the post office, he goes into the gas station, and he's happy to do so. People in turn are happy to see him as well and give him love and butt scratches as he so rightly deserves. True is registered as my emotional support animal. Since his exile, I have lost significant weight and sleep. It's hard to sleep knowing that the person next door has no problems brandishing a gun on Main Street in my town. And being in the middle of an ongoing stalking case as well with no sort of alert or protection against that, it's hard to sleep. This may seem like nothing, but I promise, if it were you and your neighbor and your sense of safety, that would have been taken away from you, you would be unsettled as well. In conclusion, all I can hope is that you understand and find some compassion to my gentle stride, knowing that I have and will continue to do everything in my power to never let something like this happen again.
Where is True right now?
At a friend's house out of town.
Out of the town?
And what, I mean, what is the whole fact? I understand that you contacted the vet for the records, but even if they close, they still have to keep records for so long. So at what point can, I mean, because that's really my biggest thing is we ask you to supply stuff, and that has not been done. And that's somebody else's safety, too, because...
I understand that as well. And I have taken every action to make sure that that part of that statement has been taken care of. He can no longer reach that area. There is a very safe, passable walkway now that he cannot reach. Like I said, in the three years we've lived there, that ties them there for three years with no issue whatsoever. He literally just got startled.
In a common area, though. Not in his territory, but in a common area.
Where his line reached. Yes, where his line reached. And his line has since been moved.
So do you have another vet? I'm assuming, I pick out the middle. You can't, you can't supply his records because the vet is no longer available?
Right, and the copies that I have, I am not able to access.
I understand that. I don't have a clue where mine is.
I mean, I have every intention of having his vaccinations updated, but that doesn't prove that he was vaccinated when the bite occurred.
Well, I don't personally have a problem. If you can get as many people out for your dog, it's a pretty good saying. That said, we have to have records. You know, we have to prove. I've got this little mouthy white dog that you've seen around. Thanks to the Saint Bernard everyone's gonna watch. That, but I do have the records. It's unfortunate that you can't get them. So it's difficult. I guess...
I mean, I do have every intention of having his...
So did you get a letter from the vet when they closed? Because normally, when like a doctor's office or veterinarian closed, somebody else absorbs their handshakes. Did you get any of that? And those records go to that vet? Did you get any of that, kind of?
I did not.
How long have they been closing?
I just recently reached out when this whole thing happened, so I don't know. In all honesty, I have no honest answer for that.
And who is the vet, if I may ask? The veterinarian clinic? If you don't know the name of the vet, that's fine. Just veterinarian clinic.
I'm pretty sure the veterinary clinic is Mississippi Valley Vet Clinic. I'm almost positive. I can't say for sure because I can't see, I can see the envelope on the letterhead. But I was a vet tech. I reached out to those doctors and nurses that I know worked there.
And where is this located? I guess I'm not familiar with this vet.
Definitely.
The person that got bit, are they in upset? Are they here or are they...
They are not here. No, he's not.
But they're the ones who called the police regarding this fight?
Yes, sir.
Even after you took care of their hand?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, I have a lot of compassion for your situation. Dog lover myself. But I'm not sure we can reverse the decision because that's the way our code is written.
Then what was the point of this hearing today?
I think, I think what we're saying, like, my personal, I would love to see the vaccination records, registration records. That's our biggest thing because that is part of the ordinance. And so I think that's where he's coming from. Am I...
Yeah, we're, I mean...
I mean, at this point, we need a...
Dog's unregistered. There's no vet records available for vaccination. You know, the quarantine process had to be taken because, just to, I guess, validate, no rabies. But, you know, there's a hand bite registered with the police. And I don't believe our code allows for us to just compassionately reverse this black-and-white decision. Dog bit somebody and a complaint was written, and our code is written like that, like there's a zero tolerance for this.
The thing is, there's several other dogs in this town that have bit people. They're still in town.
Not if they've been, not if they've been brought in front of us. Because I, this is the worst part of this job for me is this very thing.
He's the nicest dog I've ever...
I cannot think of one time where we reversed the decision.
I have a police record number right here of the dog that attacked my dog stating that he bit another dog with a police report number on it.
And no action was taken to remove the dog?
That dog was the one that attacked my dog.
The code section on that states that it has to attack two domestic animals or more times within twelve months.
There's a difference between an animal versus animal attack and an animal versus person.
Well, what about the two-year-old?
Then what about the two-year-old?
So the two-year-old is also a situation where there's nothing around to show if the animal's provoked. It was an internal family situation. They took their child to the doctor. The doctor reported to us. There was nothing in, you know, part of the code also talks about provocation or being off their premises, different things like that. That dog was on their premises and was a family member.
No way it's provoked. The dog might have bit to be a witness by himself, whether he was provoked or not. So what happens if you don't have a vet for this dog right now? Correct?
I'm working on that. I'm not right now.
I mean... What happens if they come back with a vet that's certified that these, all the shots are there, et cetera? I don't know.
That would be my question. If we were able to provide updated and current vaccination records and then follow the process with the registration that she was previously unaware of, would that convince the city to allow True to come home?
It would definitely put weight on it. I can tell you that right now. But at this point, if we don't have records, it just can't happen. I mean, and that's, we're just following city ordinance on that.
But once he's vaccinated, will he be allowed to be...
So are you saying he's not vaccinated?
Once his vaccinations are updated.
Okay, okay. I'm just asking because you just said, "Once he's vaccinated." I just want to make sure that he did, like... When was, do you recall the last time he was vaccinated?
Two years ago.
Okay.
He was vaccinated. It was just without the records.
Right. We haven't heard that he was when the bite happened.
But I'm not saying I'm not willing to go update his shots so you have current records. But what I'm asking is that if I bring you these records of his updated shots, are you still gonna tell me that I can't register and that he's not allowed to be here?
I, like I said, I think the whole registration and the whole vaccination, that will weigh a huge part. If we can prove that, then I personally, and I can only speak for myself, but that would weigh very heavy on my decision as moving forward in bringing him back into the community.
Will there be another one of these meetings before he would be allowed back in?
You can always put it on the agenda. You can request to have it on the agenda at that point. I mean, am I right or wrong?
I mean, I can see that it would be bad. I've been bitten by dogs.
Me, too.
And they, some of them needed to go away, and some of them were just bored, quite frankly. And I looked like an easy target. And I'm a dog lover, obviously. So, but we can't allow vicious dogs in the city limits to bite people. That's, that's the whole point of the ordinance. If there, if you can get a vet that says your dog is a pussycat and, and, you know, you've got current shots, it would certainly affect how I would vote. Because basically, the other way, our hands are tied.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Yeah, William.
Yes, I would love to hear your opinion.
I'm the city attorney. As many of you know, I'm a dog lover also. I have labs at home that I, I have a pouch of potatoes, but occasionally go out and chase rooster pheasants, and I tend to miss very many. Here's the problem, as I see this. If you look at our code, it doesn't say if the dog is vaccinated, even if it bites someone, that it can be allowed in the city limits. That's not what the code says. To me, they're two separate issues. One is, is the dog vaccinated and registered before the incident? All dogs are supposed to be registered with the city. All dogs are supposed to have up-to-date vaccinations. I think that's the state code. So that's one issue. The second issue is whether or not this dog bit somebody, and that's the next issue. And I'm not sure that the code allows this council to say, "Well, if you give me the vet record that should show that the dog was vaccinated prior to the incident," even if you have a vet opinion that says this dog is not, his or her opinion, a vicious animal, not sure that allows you to circumvent what the code says.
And that's my dilemma, is that the code says what it says. And if I could vote with my heart, I think we all would vote with our hearts and be unanimous to bring your dog back. But we can't.
As far as the registration goes, that should be a non-issue here. I am still taking that up with the courts in Cedar Rapids. That was not left at this meeting. That was left to the courts in a completely different thing that I am completely dealing with separately from this.
Okay.
I knew nothing of the registration.
I don't know...
I know more than a dozen people in this town that up until them knowing about my situation, they didn't even know they had to register their dogs in this town. But this is not a registration hearing at all. That's a non-issue to me at this moment. There's another issue that I am dealing with completely separate of this.
But it's still a requirement to have your dog registered in the City of Lisbon.
Yes, yes.
And I, I don't have a dog. I don't own a dog. I don't, unfortunately, I am not home, and that poor thing would be killed all the time. And, but I, that doesn't mean I love dogs. And like Nick said, if we could vote with our hearts, I think you would have our vote. My other thing, though, is he's never been this, True has never ever, you've never seen this side of True, correct?
He was startled.
Right. But the older dogs get, the more temperamental they also get, correct? I mean, for the most...
No, not even for the most part, no.
Well, what I've seen of dogs, I've seen dogs get very temperamental the older they get because, because I know a lot of people that have dogs. So I'm just saying that just because you haven't seen him act this way, what happens the next time he gets startled?
Well, I'd move the line to where that would be enough.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, maybe you're walking down the street and a child or a family is walking on this...
Somebody walks down the street passing, and I pull my dog to the side and make him sit down because I know that he's too old. I know he looks big and scary. So just to comfort the other people in the neighborhood, I will purposely take my dog off of the sidewalk, set him down, and let somebody walk past.
Because there's other places that he could be startled.
Yes, oh, I totally agree.
Yeah, I can help you introduce yourself.
Sorry, excuse me.
Can you guys see letters with, they're just character letters that I'd like you guys to read?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Emily Simon. I am a resident of Mount Vernon, Iowa, but I would like to speak to a situation which I was involved in similar to this. Chief Shannon, I believe, was there. Not that he remembers, which is okay. But on March 6th of 2019, my dogs got out of my yard. I joke that one of them is the reincarnation of Pudini and is able to escape literally everything. Regardless of that, they were near Memorial Park in Mount Vernon, which is where I live. And one of them, who is also a pit bull mix, was accused of biting someone. On my criminal record, I laugh because it's the only thing on my criminal record. But that being said, that incident has never, ever occurred again. Similar to the discussion that is happening here, sometimes dogs are startled. Sometimes dogs do think, as you've mentioned, sir, you've been bit before. I have been bit before. There have been so many times when someone reacts in a way that they did not need to, that is not their true self or their true soul. I think even about situations where we are driving a car and we accidentally back into someone when we're leaving a parking lot. It was an accident. It was a mistake, and it is not something that you can use to judge someone. So ma'am, I understand what you're saying, that there is a potential that this could happen again. But what I'm standing here telling you is my dogs have never, ever been in that situation again, and it is something that I can guarantee will never happen. And what I'm telling you is that Cory is an absolutely incredible person and dog owner, and her dog has the best home with her. And if she is giving you her word And if she is giving you her word that this is something that will never occur again and an accident, which we all have, then I can guarantee that that is a situation where you know this is a safe decision to make in returning her dog to her. Because accidents happen. It's what you do on the other side of it.
Thank you.
May I ask you?
I'm looking through the show.
I have the pet, I've been watching True for a full week. He got along well with everyone while we were on our walks. People pet him and never once had been a move to harm anyone. He's just a good old dog. As an example, I can give you this. I was at a drive thru and I was handed my food. The cashier asked if he could pet True. I had no hesitation in saying yes. He stuck his hand in the window and pet True. I believe an aggressive dog would not allow someone to put his hand in the window, especially with food in the car. And we work around here, so this person didn't even know True or he knew this. If True wasn't, wasn't so big, he would be a great lapdog. In his eyes, in the eyes of Cory Green and True, he is her lapdog. Everybody deserves a second chance. I'm BJ Byrne. I watched him a couple of times and I noticed one. He ran away from my house once, but that was the only situation he got out because when they left, when they left our door open, that's what happened that day. But people brought him home. So, and I think Cory has been afraid of her security. I'm not proud of her dog. Personally, I don't understand. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just said thank you.
I think it's just important, like council talked about, we conducted the investigation. There was no other independent witnesses or anything from what we had. Everything that Cory just talked about today was consistent with what she told the officer that day. The officers, you had the officer's information as well from that standpoint too.
Doug, have you talked to Dave Hudson?
I haven't talked to anybody. I didn't. The officer, I was the officer, the officer investigated, every one person.
I just have heard recently that Dave Hudson was the one that saw him brandishing the weapon and had to tell him to put it away.
Yeah, that's possible.
And I don't know what the rules of brandishing the weapon in town is, but that concerns me more than a dog bite.
And Cory was outside with all people's weapons.
The incident with the weapon involved and stuff like that was followed up on and there's charges related to that incident as well.
I guess we're not on that.
Let's take a, for violations and that sort of thing.
Yeah, well. Get this block out. So. I think y'all know, but I'm trying to sound like that 132 East Bean Street. I have a neighbor across the street that's Cory Green and I've been around, she basically rescued True and I've been around him several times. Very non-violent dog. He looks like, said vicious, but my little officer running shepherd would whip his butt and acts more deadly around him than True has ever hit towards any dog I've been around. The thing I'm seeing too is Brandon Wolf and I walk into town a lot with our dogs and I have to walk the street, it's my official impairment. I hate the sidewalks. They're buckled, they're kicked up, they get grass all the time as long as I walk the street. And there's been several occasions, Brandon and I have to pull our dogs back and pick them up because there's German Shepherds on Market Street that have come out at our dogs or dogs at other places. And the people are yelling, oh, they're nice, they're nice. I'm like, well, that's fine, I'm a dog lover too, but I don't know, my dog doesn't know if that dog's coming at him to attack him, other than that, you know what I mean? So, I don't know if we have to maybe relook at the ordinance and maybe rewrite it to where that, you know, we can have these kinds of conversations to get to the issue at hand. You know, because I, I'm involved actually in a case with Cory right now that I got dragged into by some mentally ill person that was stalking her. And it took the cops well over six months to even start to think of it somehow. The only time they did is when they started responding to Nick Walton, talking about this guy was going to burn down Cory's house and building. And then he was sending me threatening texts, messages, getting me involved in something I had nothing to do with. I know, never knew this guy. And so I understand when somebody's sending you a photo of you sleeping on your couch, you might want to have a dog to help protect you. And then when you're getting no support from the police department and things, until three city business owners in the two towns, their businesses were getting threatened and then we finally got something done. You know, so I understand where Cory's probably feeling now because that dog was her sense of protection, you know? Even though he's a big puppy dog, looks like he could murder anything, but he's just a beach, you know? So, I live in the same type of situation in my dogs. He's a leash out back and I'm going to have to shorten his pride because he can, he can go about a foot into the alley. So if somebody comes around my garage door and then he's just going to bark at you, he ain't going to do nothing, but it would startle somebody. Or if he's sleeping and he's deaf and somebody come around that corner and cuts onto my sidewalks or my driveway because it's forward and the gravel, dirty ass alleys, all full of mud stuff, so everybody jumps over onto my property. So then I'm going to, you know, am I going to lose my dog if somebody comes over and chalked us laying there sleeping and they startled him because he's deaf and then he gets up and you don't know what to do and you might accidentally nip at him? You know, so there's, I don't know, I just think we should maybe relook at this ordinance and see if there's a way we can maybe rewrite it and get the opportunity for a dog to have a voice. Because there's a lot of things that happen in this town that, you know, people get by with or this and that and, you know, a dog just want to have a voice. It's like, it's, it's instant, they're gone or this and that, you know what I mean? And I understand we can't have vicious dogs, we can't have a lot of things happening, but I just would like to see to be able to have a little better voice or something with the ordinance maybe, I don't know what you guys think, we could relook at it and give a person an opportunity. And I understand with Cory's situation, you know, on my bet, he retired and then they completely built a whole new building and all that and some of my records have been lost. I mean, I'm lucky, I've had, been able to keep mine around, but I understand where Cory's coming from, what she's talking about. She came out of a bad relationship and I don't know, have any of you guys ever been in bad relationships? Sometimes you got bail and you don't want to go back or ask for things back, so, you know, sometimes, you know, you want to keep good records and keep things, but situations happen sometimes like that. And I mean, no excuse, but that's life, you know? So, I'm just saying maybe we could look at something like that and we need to really address some of the leash law and everything else. Because like I said, when I'm out walking, I've been, had dogs mount, luckily they've been good, nice, wanting to play, but I had one, one time that did attack my dog kind of, they fought for a minute, I got between and kicked him out with my stick, you know, and stuff, but, you know, I'm just saying, you don't know when something comes at you like that, what's going to happen. So anyway, that's, thanks you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'll get back and trip over everything.
Do you have a current vet for this dog?
No, sir, I'm working on that. I have a current vet, he literally has just opened or is about to open, it's a brand new vet.
Oh, yeah, I see him Mount Vernon.
Yeah, the brand new vet in Mount Vernon, he is either just about to open or has just recently opened, like my dogs literally got the second review tag that they even made there, there OOO two on their identification.
Where's there a new vet in Mount Vernon?
Um, over next to like the sleep-in.
Hope's insurance.
Yeah, it's in the basement, I think one of those buildings or something.
Like he's literally just been finishing everything, but that is brand new and she's going to be on that list and we'll make sure that all paperwork and everything is up to date because that is absolutely needed and understood. Absolutely sucks that she lost her paperwork, but as everyone has been through that, especially with COVID closing things and its craziness, but that will be definitely taken care of and addressed for sure.
Mark, I have a question, if you could help me answer it please. Fifty-five eighteen D, fifty-five eighteen G. It says, has bitten.
Anything on Rick, fifty-five eighteen?
D?
I don't have a fifty, I have a fifty-five eighteen one and two.
It's under the vicious, vicious animal.
Fifty-five eighteen of my code says penal awards prohibited. Can we talk about the definition, Rick?
It's the page three forty-three.
Okay, that's under definitions, okay. I'm there.
Okay. So it says, has bitten or clawed a person or persons and attacked was up to both from the animal with vicious tendency to present past conduct, including that such animal has bitten or clawed a person or persons or could not be controlled by or restrained by the animal.
Owner.
And then, then it said, the next one is, has attacked a domestic fowl on two separate occasions within the twelve-month period or has attacked any person, domestic animal, any person, domestic animal or fowl, one time causing serious injury or death while at large? We haven't considered this dog to be at large, did we?
It was just in a public.
I would say it's, yeah, it's entering into a public area. It's private property, but accessed by anybody that lives in that apartment complex.
And then what's in the room?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know, like, is it at large? What defines at large?
A big serious injury.
Right, that's.
Should be thirty dollars' fine.
I don't know what, no. I guess, it was that back area, right, or was it the alley?
It was my back area, right?
The driveway area, it goes around behind the building.
Code defines at large, it says, at large means off premises of the owner.
Or probably renter too, right?
Say that again.
Or renter two?
Renters.
Renters.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, it doesn't say renter, it says off premises of owner. So if you live in a rental situation, you possess.
Or the animal or the property.
It says at large means off the premises of the owner.
Okay.
So, so if you're, for example, if it's a single-family home and the dog is within the boundaries of the home, it's not considered at large.
For the yard.
For the yard, yes, the yard.
What is the situation with your apartment? How much of the yard do you rent? Any of it? Probably.
I mean, it's not really a yard. If you'd like to go for a walk, I can show you my yard.
It's a common area.
It's a, I mean, I have a, I have a, I have a cupboard, I have a cupboard parquet with two cardboards. I have the side of my building, which is where my living room is, I have door access to my kitchen, door access to my living room. There is a common walk area, it's like the blocked off outside of the premises, it's just the other side of that. It is literally that same alley. It's blocked off to cars. Nobody really walks through there. That kid had been through there seven times in half an hour that day. I didn't know what was going on. The dog was outside for two minutes, it was freezing cold, he hates the cold. All he wanted to do was come back inside. Hayden came around the corner, startled the dog. The dog literally got these two fingers. I was the first person to clean that boy's fingers up. These two fingers. That dog's mouth is this big. I have to shove my hand in that dog's mouth up to here to give it a tip. That's real. It's slimy, it's gross, it's not fun.
So, really, we should let, take a look at this ordinance because bitten or clawed, so this thing, if it's at large, jumped on you and clawed you.
You could lose your.
It could be vicious, but when, it probably should say, has attacked any person, domestic animal or fowl, one time causing a serious injure, injury or death while at large?
Rick, I think you have to look at the first paragraph of the definition of eighteen because I think it limits that. It says vicious animal means any animal except for a dangerous animal per se, which is not what we have here. As listed above, which has bitten or clawed a person or persons while running at large. If it's not running at large, meaning it's not off the premises, then this doesn't apply.
Okay.
So, the question is, and for the council is whether or not this dog was running at large. In my opinion, when you have common area in a rental situation, the only area that you really possess or rent is either your parking garage, if you have one, and the interior space of your apartment. Everything else is common ground. So it's really not your property to allow a dog to be running at large on your property. The other factor for me that was a difference was the dog was off the yard area, was on a public walkway. To me, that means it's no, it isn't at large. So, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at the code. We do this all the time, that's what cities do, codes change over time. But the question is, the code that's before you, whether or not this dog meets the definition of the code and should be removed from the city limits.
I believe it also should be considered with the letters that you've received as to whether the dog is actually vicious or not. I think that is, that is a central argument here to consider. Because I believe that there is a preponderance of evidence in front of you that would suggest that the dog is not. Because I can assure you that he is not.
Well, I have to say that I'm fairly impressed that the dog could get in more support than I could. I'm, I'm pretty impressed with that, so that, and that takes.
Sneak sounds to the dog.
Dad, can I test to help Cory move out in a hurry in two hours with Todd Gerkey there? Me and my husband moved him out, moved her out, so there is likely, I have the weed mist that she cannot get back because that is the situation she does not need to put herself back in. So, it was a tight situation on a rainy night in two hours with Officer Gerkey on site for three people.
To clarify one thing, the dog was never in the public alley, is that correct?
No, sir. I mean.
Just in a parking area for your park.
There's a common walkway there that his line extended into.
Yeah.
But he was secured in my area.
It's that cut-off alley. You'll need to block it off. It's between D and D body or anything.
Between D and D body and the water map.
He hit the D and D body building by no way. His leash is on that.
No, it's, it's, it's the alley that goes.
Yes.
I mean, that's, the kid, the kid had a funny enough.
We're talking about the alley. We're talking about the alley that he was in.
He avoided the dog.
That's a public space.
That's a public space.
But that, that's the alley, that's the alley, okay.
But, you know, he had a rule, he could have avoided the dog too, but I think it was just a wrong place, wrong time, kind of thing, so.
It's situational, that one. I have taken that into account and he has been moved further away from that to exert the fact that he will never be able to reach.
I think it's also really great to notice that there's a huge, there's a huge difference between absent owners and very present owners. This is clearly not a person that just like has a dog and frugally doesn't care about it and is running him up and causing trouble and she's just like, whatever, like, she clearly really cares about this, she is definitely addressing it, she's going to do everything she can to get the records updated, do the registration that she wasn't even aware of to begin with. She's already changed the lead, she's followed all the rules, she's come to the meetings. This is clearly a situation where a dog is not likely to have something happen again or, or the fact that it even happened in the first place, this is not an immature situation. She's very much so handling this and I think that that shows a lot about how this will progress into the future. She's not frivolous, she's not just like, can you even walk that? Like she's not just throwing a fit. She's really, really taking charge of this and I think that that says a lot about you guys giving her trust into the future and giving True trust into the future because not only does True have the backlog of love and support throughout his life, but also seeing what you guys are seeing today and from the past and everything. I hope that that goes into what you guys vote for with the future because this is a very good owner and a very good dog in a very unfortunate situation that are doing everything they can to fix it and make it right.
If I take it, there's a court for at-large too?
Just the registration.
Like I said, the dogs don't have the ability to defend themselves with a voice. So nobody was seeing the situation except the person that was bit. So you don't know for sure if this person was perpalking or if he did know that True was there, maybe don't like him or has something against Cory, we don't know, you know?
He's not even the same.
Yeah, and obviously he must not have been that devastated by it or that hurt, like he's not here tonight.
I would also like to.
So it's just, you know, I understand you got to follow the code, but like you said, with a lot of codes, like when I was doing the site in my building and stuff and I was told it was completely okay to do and then the next thing I know, I spent five grand on siding, I couldn't do it. It was like, no, you know, we need to start looking at all these different codes and going through and updating codes and, you know, times change, things change and, you know, hopefully this is a good opportunity for all of us to learn and be able to look at into some certain ordinances that do need updated or need to be revised or looked at and have a different opinion maybe drawn to them.
Can I ask the chief a question? Chief, when your officers are trained in investigations, whether it be a dog bite, domestic dispute, whatever, are they trained on what questions to ask to try to get to the bottom and get as much factual evidence as possible?
Yes.
Any reason to believe that the officer or officers in this particular instance did not follow police procedure to try to ascertain those facts about what had happened?
I can attest to that one.
No. The understanding I had, like you said, tried to identify, said there's other witnesses, it was not at the time.
So we don't, is it, were there any facts that were brought up that you're, that you're aware of, that your officers found out that the dog was provoked in any way?
No.
Okay. My understanding, my understanding were, there were no witnesses other than the gentleman who was bitten and of course the dog.
And I think the distinction would need to be drawn between provoked and startled. I understand where the council's going with that, but I also. I understand where the council's going with that, but I also would say that, that again, you're presented with, with evidence as to what kind of character this dog actually has versus an isolated incident where he may have been provoked, perhaps not, or, but certainly at a minimum probably startled and, and that being an isolated incident.
Someone would, I would go contrary to that. If you don't have any witnesses and there is no one saying that the dog was not provoked and based on the witnesses and the fact that this individual then brandished a weapon and seems to be potentially mentally unstable, there is full potential that the dog was very well provoked. So I think without witnesses, we, we go innocent until proven guilty and we hold that to the dog as well.
My understanding, the fact is, when the gentleman was bitten, he did not have a gun in his possession. Correct? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so I'm not sure that fact is necessarily relevant. I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from. The reason it, the code talks about provoked is that that's actually an exception to the vicious animal. If the dog's been provoked by somebody then, or it's protecting its owner in a situation like that, then it's therefore deemed per se not a vicious animal. That's, that's the purpose, the way the code likes to state this.
Sorry, let me, let me be clear. What I was saying is that there is a potential chance that the dog was provoked based on the owner's following actions after the situation because that, to me, would state that that individual would be a person who would potentially provoke a dog. So I think we don't.
We can't put a stereotype on that though. I mean, that's, that's assuming something that we can assume.
We can't assume the dog's vicious.
But, but at this point in time, the dog bit somebody, so it becomes a vicious animal. So, we can all sit here and go round and round and round and round and talk about it, but ultimately, what it came down to, if somebody was bit, we can't stereotype somebody's mental health as you stated because he had the potential. We can't do that. We're not here to sit here and judge as to what their past or what their future would make them do. We're, we're not here to do that, unfortunately.
But that's precisely what I am stating is that there were no witnesses. So.
There were no witnesses, witnesses on either side though, either.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, so at that point, we have to take somebody's word for it.
Well, and that's where we're all here, as you keep saying, like, the dog doesn't have a voice. So.
You're right. The dog doesn't have a voice.
The humans on their side of it and that's been heard. We're here to speak for the dog and, and the victim's not here to speak on his.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
It's to say he didn't fall on the ice and scratch his finger, you know?
It's a very icy alley. I wish I could bring that up.
As long as it's gonna seem fair from both sides.
Oh, absolutely. Like, I think we all stated, if we could vote with our hearts, we definitely would. But we, we have an ordinance that we have to follow and if this continues, we don't want to set an example and let it happen, continue and continue and continue with other people. Travis has already mentioned that he's seen people, dogs without leashes or on, on a chain. So if we set this precedent, then, okay, well then we have to accept everybody. So, at a certain point, we either have to change the ordinance, revise the ordinance, look at the ordinance and do it that way. But as of right now, this is where we stand.
I have two questions. One for, please, chief. From, it's my understanding the dog was able to reach a public alley that runs north-south there. And if the dog can do that, is he considered at large even though he's on a chain or not?
I would prefer the, the at-large portion to the city attorney from that standpoint. The point of it is, everybody that lives in that apartment complex has the exact same use of that. Any citizen can walk through there.
If, if it's a public alley, even though it's not used to drive cars through, any citizen could walk through there or any child.
Correct.
And the second question I have is for our attorney. If the council would vote to allow the dog to stay, what does that do to our ordinance as far as being able to enforce it in the future?
Well, I mean, you, John, you know, I've worked for this council for a lot of years and one of the things I always say is, we have to be careful that we don't capriciously apply our code. It's gotta be fair and reasonable to everybody. So, if the council decides not to enforce the code, whether it's issue, issue or any other issue, then I think you're setting a precedent that the code really isn't valid. That's, that's what I worry about as a city attorney. If I'm then required to try and enforce that provision in another instance, that people come back and say, wait a second, you didn't enforce it on this and these facts are almost the same, why are you doing it to me? That's what I worry about as the city attorney.
Could you read the code with a part if the animal was provoked, it would not qualify? Because that was not brought up until a minute ago.
I was sorry to say that. The only good of conduct I ever gave him had nothing to do with any of that. None of that was ever stated to me.
I think it's the eighteen D.
On code, has bitten or clawed a person or persons, and the attack was unprovoked?
Yeah, here we go. It says, it's part, it's eighteen D as in dog, just for the record, has bitten or clawed a person or persons and the attack was unprovoked, or any animal that has exhibited vicious tendencies in present or past conduct, including such that said animal has bitten or clawed a person or person semi culled or.
Shouldn't he have learned any inside later before?
Yes, I do have it. We don't know he was unprovoked, Travis. We have no idea.
But we don't.
Because he said that he.
But equally, we don't know that he was provoked.
Right.
Right. We don't know either way. So.
You're going, you're going on one guy's testimony.
Yes, because.
Against somebody that can't testify.
Well, that's why we're here today, right?
Right. That's the whole point.
Because if it was just like on secure camera, no questions asked, that would be.
Yeah, it would, it would be.
But this is where.
Black and white.
This would be where the conversation.
This is, this is why this is good.
It's why this is here.
Well, the gentleman that got bit, is it in here?
No.
No.
And I would also like to point out that I don't think that two fingers in the middle of your hand constitutes as a serious injury.
I agree with our.
It's not serious. I was the first one that saw it, you guys. I took him into my heart.
So the serious injury portion is not a little arguable?
Yeah.
That's the bite. Serious injury is a.
The bite with serious injury or death.
That's a different portion.
There is no serious injury.
So it goes back to.
Can I see one of those pictures that you have? Can they see one of those pictures?
So, is the decision being made that because you don't know whether the animal was provoked or not, that what the situation with the dog is, is to whether you are choosing to say, based on testimony from numerous people along those letters, that the chances are this dog has reacted this way without being provoked?
Well, I think, Cory, you mentioned that he was startled, right?
He got startled.
He was startled. So let's take the provoked out of the equation at this point because Cory has already stated in her statement up here that he was startled.
Well, she's a serious.
That means there'll be a provoked place.
It's possible.
It is possible, but she did never use the word provoked. She used the word startled.
Well, because if you're startled, you may jump too.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. All I'm saying is that we keep going around the provoked. We don't know either way. So that's out of the equation at this point. It was on public property. That's.
If it's, if it's out of the equation, then does that render it moot in the, in the code?
Well, we still have a public property issue that he was in a location that he shouldn't have been in to begin with.
I already covered that.
What's the, what's the? Where was it at? What's, what's the Eastman? Where's the Eastman?
The analogy, the analogy that I've done over the year, or I have, where I've tried to enforce traffic citations is when someone gets pulled over for speeding, as an example, and the officer does the typical run-through and then asks for them to have proof of insurance. And they don't have proof of insurance. But then we come to trial, so the officer writes them up for speeding as well as no liability insurance. When we get to trial, the defendant will argue, well, I didn't have it then, but I have it now. So that should be okay, right? And the fact is, it's not. So the problem we have here is, even though I'm sure Cory has made substantial changes, the question still is whether or not the dog violated the code. This was a violation of the city code at the time. And I think that's what put before the council tonight on the appeal. You've heard from a lot of great people about how wonderful the dog is. I get it. But I think that's the issue for council to decide.
But isn't the result being city property removing the dog from city limits? Is that a different code violation in result in the codes of?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Sorry. If a dog is on property that it's not supposed to be on, right? It's one foot into the alleyway.
Okay.
My assumption is your code does not say that dog must now be removed. So we have multiple different issues of was the dog startled as opposed to the word provoked? Was the dog on public property and getting everything up to date? We've discussed getting everything up to date. I, I would assume that if a dog was one foot on public property, you would not remove them from the city. Is that correct?
That, that's not correct. That's not what the code says. The code does not differentiate between folks that later show that the dog has been vaccinated or has been registered, which I know is not before council tonight, but it's the same analogy I made with the no liability insurance. The issue is whether or not the council believes that this dog was, was at large based on what the code says. If it does, if the council believes that, then whether or not this dog jumped, was provoked, we don't have any evidence that this dog.
Is there any evidence that?
Excuse me. Can I, can I?
Sorry.
That's okay. There, there's no evidence that I've heard tonight, other than hearsay, that this dog may have been provoked or startled. So then I think you have to, and the chief already test, tested, testified, sorry, stated tonight that his officers are trained to ask thorough questions and there was no evidence that I'm aware of that this dog was startled or provoked. So if the dog was provoked, then I think it gets out of the definition of a vicious animal, based on the code. But we don't have any evidence of that. We have assumptions, hearsay.
And nobody's standing, nobody's saying, the guy's not even here to say it.
Well, the thing is. He doesn't have to.
Yeah, but that guy could just say that he was out, out of the property.
But I, I'm gonna be, I'm working from the perspective that, that the officers wouldn't have asked him that, those questions.
And he went by you, an officer.
I, listen, a lot of people lie to a lot of people.
That's on his conscience. That's on his conscience.
I'm just saying, that's.
Because that's, that's on his conscience. If he's still lying, then that's on his conscience.
Like, again, the dog has no defense. You're, you're assuming this person's telling you the truth, that he, maybe you cut across Cory's property, startled the dog and the dog bit him. So he's now trying to find a way out of there, find a way maybe to come back after Cory or his net and say, oh, no, I was in the alley. There's no witnesses except him. You know what I mean? So how do you prove any of it? The guy could have fallen on the ice and then claimed the dog bit him. Nobody knows. So how can you garnish, bam, put the javel, gavel down on it and say this is, this is true, a hundred percent?
One thing that might provide a little clarity.
That's awesome.
The officer, when talking with the person who was bitten, to kind of remove some of this.
Who's the officer?
Disruptions and angst from that standpoint. The person who was bitten told the officer that they didn't want to do anything about it as well. However, when there's a dog bite, it's the owner's responsibility to report the dog bite to the police or the public help. We found out from the person who was bitten. We followed up with Cory before, you know, as part of that process, trying to gather, as we're working through that. But the person that we're talking about who's not here didn't want to do anything about it originally. So I don't know that he's going to be vindictive from that standpoint. Just my thoughts on that.
Has this dog been examined? I mean, you, you said you were going to new vet in town or whatever.
He will be.
Has, has that?
That has not occurred yet.
I, I suffered from a dog bite. Rick was still here, huh, to some people. Lazy old dog. I walked up, was talking to the new people that lived there, standing there. I petted the dog and pretty soon the dog came up and bit me in the leg and it was three stitches. I hadn't, I hadn't done anything other than pet it. So I didn't realize that all of this other stuff could come. So I just went and got a tennis shot and forgot it. I'm, I'm wondering if.
The dog will have an appointment made tomorrow.
Well, you know, and of course, they can't tell you that a dog's not going to bite somebody tomorrow.
No, that's not, they don't know that. Nobody knows that.
I mean, it just seems to me that it's a pretty drastic step for the incident.
I appreciate it, honestly.
I, I live in a town where it's two bites by the same dog. The second bite, he gets put down.
Okay, that's your ordinance.
It's your heart ordinance.
What town are you living in?
Leclerc, Iowa.
I didn't know anybody that lived in Leclerc, Iowa.
I live on the island.
We used to have that ordinance too.
Yeah.
But we had too many first bite dogs biting a second time and that's when we changed it.
Yeah. I have to say, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have the ordinance reviewed. I'd like to get some examples from other towns to see how they word their policies and how they handle this kind of thing.
You know, another reason that, you know, your dog's gotta be, should be registered, have its tags on at all times, is the state code supersedes the stuff of, you see your dog running out in the, out in the county, that it's, it's a target.
Yes.
That farmer has a right just to shoot it.
Yes.
Or law enforcement.
Yes.
I have a question. I just got a new pet and I talked to the vet and several, I got everything done in Illinois. I live in Iowa. They said I didn't need to put a tag on the collar. As long as I had the paper that showed the baby shot, the animal was put.
Yeah, I can tell you if it runs loose in Cedar County, the sheriff sees it, you don't have tags, it's gonna get it.
It's gonna have tags on its collar?
It's not the issue.
I don't know.
It's in your department, not the issue of this one.
Okay, we'll go to your city. Caravan.
Well, I think there's a lot of confusion for people in town that, I know a ton of people that have dogs that are.
I know it's been on water bills several times.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'll look at that next time I get.
I don't have a dog and I knew it way before. I was a part of this. So, I mean, I.
One poor child looking in water bills.
All right.
Just like I can't read the calendar on top of my garbage can. Oh, I hate this week. Does, does anyone have anything new to add that hasn't already been said?
I think I'd just like to point out that, or, yeah, just that, I think that clearly this has a lot of different facets to it. It wasn't just an open and shut dog bite that, that, like, we're here because there are these different levels of how it can be seen from a lot of different directions. Is there were any witnesses besides the one that was bit? There's discrepancies where it was on the property. There's, you know, the vaccination records, the everything, like, there's a lot going on and therefore I think that it doesn't just directly fall into any one specific ordinance here or there that like isn't open and shut, which is why we're here talking about it. So I think this is actually like a really great opportunity to look at those ordinances, take this as a unique case and not to say that it's like, oh, well, if we let this one get away with something, then it's gonna become a problem later on. This could be a turning point. This could be an opportunity to understand things in different ways, to recognize that there are so many different angles involved and that it should be taken very seriously and it should be thought out and maybe not just Chloe Kate right now or this or that or absolutely no, absolutely yes. But she's gonna get all of her stuff put together as far as background and doing things updated, registered and whatnot. She's gonna do everything that she can. And I think there's a lot of things brought up today that now the community, you guys, everyone in this room, everyone in the area can also get up to date with that these things are factors. things are factors, and this could happen to somebody else's pet that could be wrongly accused, or could be provoked, or could be this, or it could be that, and copilized, dah dah dah. That this is a really great opportunity to look at and address all of these things as well as deal with this one specific case. And that is the beauty of a small town and a small community, is that we have this opportunity to talk with each other. You guys have been talking about the streets and the alleys and everything, because we all know, and we all grew up here, and we all know all these different little hints and outs, and that's where we do get to make really good community change, when we can hear each other out and move forward from this, like, with real progress, as opposed to just focusing on this one thing. This one thing could open doors to a lot of bigger, better, and more productive things in the future as well.
And also for renters, renters who have their landlords pay for their water, I, my landlord's John Shaker, and they pay for water and heat, I don't get a water bill, though. So I don't see these things you see on the memos that you get from city bills, because those are provided from our landlords. So that is like something that maybe a newsletter can go out.
It does. It went out in the newsletter, I mean, it's gone reminders, it's gone out in newsletters, so.
I've lived here for 10 years.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do want the code looked at, and I think we need to schedule a, you know, we talked about it, we've talked about it in all our codes, but I'd like to move this to, you know, as far as we can, put this on the next agenda to review.
Go on a workshop, or we...
Yes, I'd love to have some examples from other communities. Certainly, this example is going to weigh heavily on how we view this code and/or potential changes to it. So I don't know if we can put that on this month's agenda, but if you have time to gather some examples from other communities, I'd like to review those as well.
This is a great time, excuse me, this is a great time to remind everybody that's watching this or in here, that there's a whole lot of dogs out there that don't have licenses, and they have to have them.
And they're not on leash.
I think it's important to let everybody know, too, from the same, the purpose of the registration and the rabies vaccination, registration with the city of Lisbon, is so that when they, when you register your dog, you're handing over the rabies vaccination to the city, we can check those records, and then if there is a dog bite, that person who was bitten doesn't have to go through the rabies prophylaxis process, which did not occur in this process, and we've had some other examples of that, and it's multiple shots over a series of, through three visits.
I had had them.
Yeah. So that's, it's a prevention, safety, public safety issue from that standpoint, too.
And if the dog has tags on it, it'll probably save you nothing, which is...
Correct.
If the police have your dog, it goes to, and that's gonna cost money to get it back, and, what is it, $70 or something like that?
And he wasn't running on lock. Yes, I do understand.
One thing to consider that may help clear this up for the future, Chief Shannon and I met with Cedar Valley Union Society, the meeting referenced a whole bunch of issues. One recommendation that they strongly considered was not having, not allowing dogs to be tethered outside. So if that was the case in this incident, the at-leash portion, or at-large portion of this, would be clear-cut. At-large would truly be any dog unattended. So that might be something to consider, you know, as we get this in and talk about, but I just wanted to pass that on, and how about the other thing?
Well, a strict reminder, because there's a whole bunch of dogs out there in Lisbon, Iowa that are not licensed.
That's right.
And they need to be for a variety of reasons, for getting here and doing it.
Can we have a reminder put on our Facebook tomorrow regarding that, Christina?
We can put it there.
We have Marsha do that.
The police department cleared out this two weeks ago.
Did you? Okay, okay. And maybe our own city one could throw it off there, too, just...
Not gonna hurt nothing.
No, it's a good reminder, it's a friendly reminder, like, you know, to make sure...
Well, I think people just don't really realize or think about, you know?
Yep, it's no different than yours golf cart that you have to get.
Your car registration.
Yep, anything. It's just one of our city ordinances. Yeah. Your golf cart has to be registered, so does your dog. You're out driving your golf cart.
Driving your golf cart.
Is it all right if I get a golf cart?
Bumper car, bumper car.
We have to, I mean, this, if there's no new information, we have to...
Move on.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Take action or move on. So do I have a motion to take any action on this thing, or retable this?
I would like to table it and go through some ordinances.
Okay.
That's just me.
Can we have, can we be prepared for the, I think it's gonna be the 328 meeting, to have a discussion workshop about this?
Yeah, I'll give it a hand.
Okay.
Second?
You know, I hope one thing is...
No, no, you don't, no, you don't.
Mr. Mayor Pro-Tam, if I may, a couple things. One is, I don't know what the status of the dog is, is the dog still out of the city?
Yes, 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 yes.
And number two, it worries me that we're tabling this to come back and potentially change the code that then would allow what happened to be okay. That's not what's before this council tonight.
Well, the code are being changed for the...
Before the council.
But the code as it sits, the dog cannot be allowed back into the community.
Right.
And that's why I would, if a motion was placed to allow the dog to come back, I would have to vote no.
Right, and I understand that.
And we all would have to vote no, to follow the code. So really, for now, the answer is no.
I understand that.
And I'm committing that we will look at the code and evaluate if it meets the needs of the community and the citizens in Lisbon, and doesn't violate state codes or anything like that. But, yeah, for now...
No, I understand, for now, no.
The dog's not allowed within the city limits. Is that...
Oh, thank you.
Understand?
Well, so, we had a vote last time, correct? And it was unanimous that the dog could no longer be in the city limits.
And that decision still stands?
Okay.
Of the dog, of this dog that we're talking about, yes?
Yeah.
I just wanted to know.
So I'm...
Being tabled.
So it's...
Being tabled.
No, we are not taking that down.
It's not, it's not being, it's not being tabled, decision's been taken, unless this council, unless somebody wants to make a motion...
Unless the council, somebody wants to make a motion, the same motion that was made last
time and revote, because she appealed it, and now she's had her due process.
Well, what if the ordinance gets changed, too?
It won't matter.
I think what the attorney's saying...
Yeah, I know that.
But if it doesn't, it can't change this decision.
In the future, if it meets the code, would the dog be allowed to come back?
We'll have to address that after the code is reviewed.
Okay.
I think that's the issue.
But this decision has to stand until that time.
Further review. Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that our vote from last time stands.
Got a second? A motion left?
You have a motion to table?
We can, we can, I made a motion that our vote from our previous meeting...
Well, there was a prior, there was a prior, there was a prior motion to table this.
Oh, gotcha.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Do a roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Nay.
Rick?
Nay.
Mike?
Nay.
Nay. So the, no motion is taken, unless any other motion is to be...
Okay. Well, you might do the same motion that you did at the last meeting, to see if people have changed their minds based on the new evidence. So what was the motion that was made last time?
I...
To remove the dog from the city limits.
Okay. They just decided not to table it. They just voted not to table it. So if someone wants to make that motion, second...
Motion by Scott, second by Barnes, either have the dog banned from the city limits.
Okay, so someone could make that same motion, if someone, if we get a second, and then...
I'll make that same motion.
Motion to ban the dog from the city limits, do I have a second? I don't have a second, so the motion is denied.
Well, the motion fails.
Fails, sorry.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and we'll take a look at this at the 328 meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
No, make sure Travis gets home.
He's on his way, I'm in help car. It is going.
Thanks, guys, that's a relief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, moving on to five, the discussion is referencing vacant businesses downtown.
This was brought by Councilman Kirk, and I thought that Mike could address this, and I had a conversation with Mark, and I thought since he was already gonna be here, this would be a good time to, if anybody has any questions. Mike wanted to know what we could do to require business owners on Main Street who had properties that were currently vacant, what we could do to get businesses in there, rather be, Mark had thought about like an incentive, it's the only possible way he saw, but Mike just wanted to inquire on what we could do to get a business in there, so I thought...
Yeah, we currently have three business places that I can think of that are empty, well, are not empty, they are jam-packed full of crap. And they're satisfied because, in one case, they're living above, and the other, they just don't seem to care, and we have people interested in becoming merchants in Lisbon, potentially, and we don't have access. And it seems to me that, and we're on them to clean up, fix up, paint up, you know, and of course, they are the last in the group to ever move, as we try to improve downtown Lisbon.
And there is no legal means of forcing them to practice business or allow someone else to practice business, right?
No, not that I'm aware of. I don't know of any state law, administrative code, case law, or hour code that allows the city to exercise some kind of push to get those businesses to lease their space or have a going concern business. At the end of the day, if those properties are in compliance with the code, and you pick out whatever code section you want in the building code, as long as they're in compliance, they can do whatever they want. Can't force them to do it. Now, if you want to incentivize them, if you want to come up with some kind of grant, but at the end of the day, you can't force people to lease their building to somebody else. You can't force somebody to sell their building to somebody else. I understand Mike's position, you know, there's a big push in small communities to revive their downtowns, because that's the heart and soul of the community. And when you have an opportunity to get those kind of downtown grants, that the state, maybe there's some of the federal, two grand, I don't know, you know, you can incentivize people to fix up their properties and hopefully entice them to rent them out and get other businesses down here, but unless you're telling me they're in violation of the building code, in other words, it's a nuisance of some sort, there's really not much leverage the city has to force them.
That's what I'm wondering, if they're piled full of old restaurant equipment or sawdust for the ceiling.
Are they inspected by the fire department?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, maybe.
We were going to do that at one time.
I mean, if it's a fire hazard, that's, that's, that potentially...
I think we did have a building inspector at one time here, that's what Rick Boots did, and then they, they got rid of that, I don't know the details of...
Like that thing?
We don't have anybody locally, I would say, that would be trained to that capacity to do that, and then, you know, I, there's probably a lot of places that could potentially fall into that, too.
Here's, here's my big worry on these types of issues, it's called the slippery slope argument, because if I look at somebody's business or building, and they decide to remodel it, and they get a, and allow use in that building, everything's fine, what's to stop me from saying, you know what, I don't like red brick buildings, I really like white brick buildings, I think you should change the city, I think you should change your storefront to white, but yet, red brick buildings are fine under the code. That's the problem of these, is who's to decide what's a going concern business in there? As long as it's not violating the code, the fire code, there's really little leverage that the city has unless it wants to invest money to incentivize people to open those storefronts up, rent them out, create incentives for people to come and open downtown businesses.
Yeah, it's been 10 years, but I remember that some town did that, they had a penalty after six months if there wasn't a business in there. I never heard whether that was challenged or whether it was deemed as a legal ordinance, and I don't know that we'd want to do that, but certainly for fire inspection, if one of the buildings downtowns goes, they're right next to each other, the whole side of the block could go, I think we'd have good grounds to have fire inspections, just for the safety of the other buildings that are attached.
I don't disagree with that, that's a separate issue from the agenda item, of course, but if there's no means of forcing businesses to open, anyway...
Well, I don't think any of you...
Then the only option we have is incentivize.
And I don't think any of you would want to be a building owner, have the city come in and say, you need to get a business in here in the next six months, or we're gonna give you a municipal infraction. I know one thing, if I were the building owner, I would take that all the way to the Supreme Court, because you've got property rights, and just, well, you're not violating the code, there's nothing they can do.
Exactly.
That's my picture.
The B Lisbon grants, I don't know if it's connected with CDG or not, or are there the downtown improvement?
So we have the downtown reinvestment.
Okay.
That is actually gonna be on next agenda.
Okay.
But that, no one has applied last year for a call. There was only one person, actually, there was one person that applied last year, and that was after we went back a second time to get, you know, to get somebody to apply. And it, I can't remember, I think it's, is it $20,000, $50,000 total? Yeah, I believe it's $20,000. Four, up to $5,000, and there's interiors got some money, and exterior's got some money, so.
And I assume these business owners have been approached with the opportunity that this is available to them, if they wish to make the investment during the years.
Yeah, this is a case of, correct if I'm wrong, but of not wanting to do anything. This is, this isn't about a standing business, this is just somebody who has got a property that's perfectly content with as it is.
Not earning anything off.
And we're trying to get, you know, I've even set up, like, appointments with people, and I've referred people to these, to these owners, to like, you know, talk about these, and I don't, you know, I don't get involved in where that fell apart, but, I mean, there was a restaurant owner, a guy that wanted to open a restaurant, and I, you know, I took him to the gentleman that owns that property, and they talked several times, and then it just fell apart, so it's more of a, yeah, it's not a, you know, like incentivizing, I don't know what it would take if somebody truly doesn't want to do something, like, you know, what it would take to do that.
And, you know, I don't, I realize money talks, we could keep boosting the incentive level, but I'm not sure that serves the taxpayers' interests the best, is to...
I know it's been brought up for quite a while, and I just thought it'd be a good time to, you know, get Mark's experience with...
Sure, double dip on Mark.
That's right.
Keep that bill as low as we can. So, Mike, I mean, what more you want to say, or...
I still think there's gotta be some way, I can't envision people owning buildings and not utilizing them.
It happens all the time, people own homes all over the place, and they sit empty for months and years, as long as they're paying the property taxes, snow is plowed, yards are mowed, and there's no nuisance, by the way, the windows aren't broken, there's not critters breaking in, you can't stop them.
I mean, we had one downtown that's been sitting vacant for how long?
All these, well...
I mean, it's been a lot of, so, I mean, we can't force them to put a business back in it.
You can't force people to own their house either.
Yeah, true.
All right, I guess we can move on then.
Mr. Mayor Pro-Tam, I think that's it for me, but I'm more than happy to stay.
Want to double dip the option? Want to double dip, y'all, triple dip. No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks everybody, good seeing you, buddy. Thank you.
Good night, good care. All right, five C, uh, discussion of possible action, uh, reference adding a citizen to the tree board.
So you probably saw your packet, the letter, um, Frances, uh, Holland had reached out to me and she'd like to join the tree board. You saw her email, we have two vacancies, um, currently, and, um, so I would recommend, I talked to her several times, um, about different things. Definitely wants to get more active in the community, good, um, so I think it'd be a, a good fit.
Do you have a motion? We have a motion and we have a second. Um, Sarah.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And I say hi, and she better not touch my record of thirty-six trees planted in this town. Let's see how that goes. All right, five D, uh, discussion of possible action in reference to purchasing spiral screen for sewer plant. Cause Travis doesn't like this flat ones, he wants a spiral one.
Correct. We've been dealing with this and budgeting for it since at least two thousand nineteen. Basically what it is, is it, it takes out the sanitary wipes, flushable wipes.
Which we shouldn't be using anymore.
Correct. Golf balls, anything big that could possibly be flushed, towels, and that ends up in a dumpster and gets hauled off to the disposal. So it does pollute the cracks in that, that's the purpose of this machine. The prices have to keep going through the roof on this. Um, we spend roughly an hour to two hours a day cleaning this out manually because a spiral screen does not work as the way it's supposed to.
Every day, two hour call offs, is?
Yeah, well, it's not a call off, so like when we come in for work, yeah.
I'm sorry, wrong first of words.
Right, so on Fridays, we make sure, I mean, we try to get as much out of there as possible. And we still spend roughly forty minutes to an hour Saturday, Sunday.
So that's a two hour call.
But we're already here, we're already here, so it's, it's getting to the point where it's eating up a lot of man hours and we need to, it's in the budget. We budgeted for it, we need to make the move for it now.
This automates that task, or two?
Yeah, basically everything's taken care of. Um, there's two options that you guys have saw in your, in your panel with, I assume they ran and gave to you. Um, I circled them, I believe, well, yeah, one was for thirty-two twenty, thirty-two, two hundred eighty-one, and one was for twenty-five, eight hundred one. Now, that's the option two, is the one that we originally have talked about and we've budgeted for years ago, was what we were gonna do. They would send one tech, we would meet it with two of our guys and get this taken care of.
Basically, the difference in price, correct me if I'm wrong Travis, is they would only send one tech versus two.
And it would take you twice as long to install or something, or?
No.
It's just more money for that person to be there, that second person of theirs to be here.
Right.
You like option two?
Yeah, I, I mean, we've had this thing in part two most times, it's not, plus it'll also work as a training for, for us too. So once they are gone, you know, we add hands on.
Do your own things.
Yeah.
Make a motion, will you, Travis, by option two?
I will second. Um, roll call. Hi, Mike?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
All right. You're, you already have a budget, though, you've known.
Yeah.
You've got it.
Yep.
All right, five E, discussion of possible action in reference to library repairs.
Painting, so I believe, uh, Amy, looks like she's on, and Becky, and I don't know the other person.
Mary Ann Tawar, Mary Ann Tawar's doing both groups.
And Rich Ethgelsen is also, he's our library board president and he is also here.
All right. So, I, I believe I saw some painting was in the maintenance, um, or repairs, anything, what else have we covered?
Um, all the upper story openings, all the windows, and then there's one boarded up door down on the, um, south side on the street level. Um, there's also the, the door for the, um, fire escape. Uh, all the, all the, um, uh, storm windows will be taken off, there's a lot of re-glazing needs to be done on the in, on the exterior of the interior sashes and the storm windows, then they'll, they'll be replaced, and then the windows will be sealed on the inside. We're trying to keep moisture from coming from within the building and getting trapped between the storm windows and the window sashes and rotting all of that out. And they also need new glazing, it's popping out, this happens with age, uh, peeling paint. Um, so that will be all those openings, and then there's a little, um, repair on the frame, on the, the fire escape transom, but that will all have the same thing, re-glazed, stripped, painted, that sort of thing. And then-
I'm sorry, go ahead, please, go ahead.
And then there's the, the steel window sills on the outside, and those will all be scraped and repainted, primed and painted. And then the, the window sills aren't as wide as the openings, so you've got brick and then steel, and that has been mortared in the past, but it's chipping out, and so he's gonna chip that out and, and caulk it because that will move between the two different materials, and so it'll, it'll seal that. We're trying to make sure no water's getting into the wall that we've worked so hard to fixes last year. And so, um, we got a bid from, uh, Dave Bennett with, um, Bennett Painting and Decorating, uh, local company, for five thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. The library board and the history center, um, not history center, his, historic preservation commission, both looked at, everything. And we both, um, recommended the city, um, release the funds so they can contract with him and do this work.
Okay, um, thank you.
This will increase the energy efficiency of the building too, of course.
Absolutely.
Um, do I hear a motion to approve the fund?
I move to make a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I, you're approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, we just want to thank, um, the Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission for their research and work on this, and also for the city for the support that they have given that building to preserve it and, um, make it serve as the library for years to come, we really appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Manny. I, I'd like to just say something too, the, the board is really pleased to work with the historic preservation on this project. Um, I, historically, I've been on the board for a long, long time, and I know this west wall project is something that, that's been part of our board goals and agenda for many, many years, so to see those improvements made and, and the ceiling done will be great. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
All right, um, moving on, six A, uh, open forum for phase one of sports complex.
So we've been talking about this for quite some time, and, um, so tonight is the open forum, and I'll just let you know that, um, as my notes say, I did send letters to all of the residents impacted on Third Avenue. Um, I have spoken to all of them as of today, um, so everybody, um, is aware of the meeting. I know that, uh, you guys are here for your own comments, but, um, I did speak to the property owner of that residence as well on the phone. And, um, the only concerns that I had, um, everybody was actually looking really forward to the, uh, park being in. Um, there is some concerns with traffic through there, but, um, I did say that I would work with YTT to potentially add another speed bump, um, do some other things in there to mitigate the traffic. Um, there's also been some consideration of possibly, uh, putting a gate through that area for like winter time to close that Third Avenue extension off in the winter, so just trying to explore some ideas. I think it's gonna be one of the things, you kind of see how it goes, um, but anyway, this is the, I guess, the time for, if anybody has any comments from the public to speak their support or opinions or whatever.
All right, you guys want to step up and say something?
Oh, I don't really want to walk up, there's a-
Oh, what's wrong?
Yeah. Guys, the city made a decision on which option they're going to do, is it going to be, based off the two, uh, fires that were sent out? Um, there's, uh, one looks, doesn't look like, I guess to me, doesn't look like it's gonna be a pass through through, it just says, keep through as is and seal coat. Does that mean it's not gonna be the main?
So, so what, yeah, so what, option one was going all the way through.
Right.
Option two was to stop it where it did stop there. They would still do the, the water mains and the, um, sewer lines, cause they have to connect it to the system.
Okay.
And then they would real, reseal that roadway.
Okay.
So that is a, that is a one option that's on the table for them. And then the option three-
Is it go straight through?
Was, is another one that goes straight through with just different cost adjustments. And then I sent you the, the one tonight is three A. The only difference really with that is moving the diamonds up to where they belong, um, for like the totality of the project, so you'll notice the, they're actually in the, the same pictures where they've always been at the top. Um, we found out that with the grading, uh, with them here, it's gonna be very minimal, and you might as well put them where they belong. You know, if you guys noticed last time, my foul balls, that was a question, about hitting vehicles in that parking lot. So anyway, that's the three A option, essentially the same as three, um, it's just a little bit different design.
And so no matter what you do, you're gonna have to dig up to Third Avenue. How is that going to impact the people that are living now? We want to always be able to get in to our driveways.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
And-
Go ahead.
We can get in to your driveways, you also have your mail services and contractors who are required to handle your trash takeout every week. So they're required to keep you accessible at all times. It's gonna be gravel sometimes, but they're being prepared.
So we'll always have access to our, our driveway and be able to do that.
Not, not one hundred percent, I mean, like you might leave for work and we gotta get through that driveway portion.
Right, right, right.
Okay, okay, yeah, you should be, okay, I just wanted to make sure. We're, we're, you're gonna finish that day. That day, you'll have access by the end of the time you vaccine back.
Right.
You will have your access.
You'll never have access when you need access.
Right, right.
Did I say that right?
No, no.
No, I said the opposite.
That was so badly.
You don't speak, you don't speak all enough.
I understand. You're never gonna block an opportunity for hours and seventy-eight minutes.
Unless something catastrophic happens.
Yeah.
And already get something unplanned.
Right, cause there's gonna be utility work going on, there's gonna be logistics going on since we've been driving around at times.
There's businesses in that, right?
We've been instructed not to do that.
Okay, and do they, do they have any idea on how long it will take them to go from Washington to Third Avenue and get that completed?
No, and we're not sure which direction they'll go either, so it's-
It could come from the west and goes-
Yeah.
At Easter, okay.
Unless we have a specific reason where we would like to instruct the contractor to go one direction to the other for access or schools, or sometimes there's certain reasons where you're, we can specify that if there's a critical reason, but otherwise, it's generally up to them to work at whatever.
My, my plan, what I've been telling everybody, and this is my goal, is to make this as least amount of disruption for the residents as possible. Now, obviously, there's gonna be some, obviously, things that go on, but the whole goal is to try to, you know, eliminate any type of-
And when are you guys gonna make a decision on what route you're gonna take? When are you gonna, hopefully tonight? Tonight, okay.
Any more input?
We prefer the non-pass through.
I'm sorry, you said what?
You prefer the what?
Prefer the non-pass through?
Right, well, the one where it stops and there's a pass all the way through. Sorry.
Yeah, so this is the original design, cause they wanted everything in the middle, and then there'd be all these plans, everything, it's kind of how it appears it is. And there need to be green spaces, possibly future plans, or to need an extra soccer field. These would be like the next phase, so these would be three more, so. So these would be three more potentially in the future, and these would be two more in the future. These would be just regulation, like we talked about before, it's just moving them onto where they, their original design. And if you go to the back page, um, Lisa can explain this, but each page is a separate bid. So if you go to the back page, that would be the final, kind of what it looks like after the first phase.
Yeah, we, as we've been working through this and talking over the month, we, last time we talked, we decided to probably work out better from a bidding standpoint to leave the roadway and the utility work, the water sewer, to the roadway contractor. Don't try to get him involved in putting in line field and T-ball and fencing and all this, this fancy baseball stuff, so. We're gonna pull, yeah, it would, cause they'd have to go out and they'd have to get some, and-
They would sell it and they would add on to it.
Right, so we just pull it out, said, we'll handle that in a separate bid, just to those special contractors. So we can get exactly what we want, to the people who just do that work. So that's how, we have three bids now. So first bid would be roadway related work and all the utilities, water sewer storm. Second bid would be the baseball related things, the, the line and fields, the dugouts, the backstops, all the stuff that goes with that. We also have putting in the northern parking lot for those upper fields as part of that bid too, because we won't need it in the very first bid, but we need it as we go into the next phase. And then the very last phase, which would just also be a, another bid, is just irrigation bid. So it would just be the irrigation systems, just to the irrigation contractors.
So I see on this, there's, uh, the, those where people sit are not included in the tiers?
In which phase? In the first phase or?
Any phase.
It's in the, go to the, in the third page.
In the, actually, in like what we need, we could be considering the second page.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, second page.
The bid that would do the baseball related work, we're talking about putting in some of the sidewalks, concrete paths with bleachers, other things at that time, when they're doing the finish work on the baseball fields. So when they're done with the roadway project, you're gonna have rough graded baseball fields, full size with the proper gentle slope, but they'll be grass, and then, or just dirt, whichever, depends on how they go together.
So you said, you said it's concrete, but there's no bleachers, right?
There could be bleachers, we haven't finalized exactly which ones.
Well, this bid doesn't include bleachers, right?
This one does not have the cost for bleachers in here yet.
I imagine they're not cheap, but, you know, that's something that certainly add any money.
Okay, well, I was just gonna say, if you're gonna spend a million dollars and we used to bring lawn chairs to sit in the grass.
Right. But, you know, we, we can't, we can't afford a stadium either, that'd be cool, but-
Well, and we keep adding, we, we, we keep adding to the project, so now we, we've never even had these big main fields in. It was supposed to just be first base soccer, which we get, so we're really trying to maximize what we're gonna get for every little dollar on this first phase. I think, uh, we've moved a lot of things around to try to reach those goals, and you can get us there faster than we thought we were gonna get by having the two fields now even be an option.
Rick, we could do fundraisers in, in the future to get, get those kind of things.
How are your big goods, Rick?
So just another thing, if you remember from last time, from option one to, one and three compared to option two, um, since we're already, we have to do the water and the sewer and the storm sewer, um, essentially it was right around a hundred thousand to actually do the roadway all the way through, so since we're already doing the work along Third Avenue, that's why it was such a cost incentive to get that roadwork done all the way through versus stopping it.
So you're recommending the A version?
This last version, the option three?
Yeah.
I, I call it three A now because of, it has the larger fields. I think that's the one we're recommending, and the way we broke out the bids, I think works well with our budgeting, and that's what we want to try to hit is the budget numbers.
So the, the A, B, and C are gonna be just, it's all part of option three, it's just gonna be three separate bids. You know, what we want to do is we want to get option three, one A, get those bids back, see where they're at, and see if we need to tailor two A and three A, but the whole point is to get all this done all in one full swoop. It's just getting the bids out.
But in the stadium, so that you can get more cost effective.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
And included in even the first stage of the bid, the roadway bid, we're gonna have everything you see here, but we're also gonna put in alternate items such as, it'd be, give you a different price for a different water main material, if we can see some cost savings in that, or a different storm sewer material. So we're gonna have these other ultimates in there, just trying to get every little bit we can- So, we're gonna have these other ultimates in there, just trying to get every little bit we can to keep this in the budget range.
Good.
I have a question, what's the goal to start on the rubber? What's the?
It would probably be this summer, we start grading. I can't say when they're gonna finish, it's gonna take a while, we won't have.
But you're gonna start on the.
Yes.
That's the.
She thought that if, if we can get the bids out, if we get them back, um, hopefully the grading was gonna be with.
When did you say the grading would be?
Like, in the May-June timeframe, is, if we can get these out this week, potentially, or next week, get those back, and then see where that's at for the grading and the.
Where the numbers come in, get contracts in place, and then we can start grading.
Um, and you see the new cost opinion there, uh, that's in front of you, that was the second page, the colorful one that I sent you. Right now, I would, I'm, I'm comfortable in the 1-4 to 1-5 range. As you can see there, I think that cost opinion's 1-6. That is without some of the cost savings. Um, one thing that does include, um, it's about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars worth of parking lot on the north side that could potentially hold off, um, you know, so that's one option to, to eliminate that. Uh, if you see the square, go to the third page of this, on the pictures, you'll see that parking lot on the north. That, that cost opinion, the 1-6 includes that seal code of that parking lot.
This, on page two, it says, for ball field bid, it says chip seal the parking lot. Is that chip seal on all three options, or?
Uh, it's, it's the whole bid.
That is that.
Cost opinion that, um, on the, the list of costs, that 1-6 number.
Yeah.
That includes that.
That's chip seal.
Yeah.
Versus black rubber concrete.
Or grass.
Or.
So, I thought we talked after last meeting that we were gonna put in there asphalt.
We're gonna have that as an alternative.
That is gonna go in there, that's what I'm gonna clarify.
Say that chip seal on a new parking lot is gonna disintegrate instantly.
What it is, is we wanted to put all three in there, just so that way we could pick, so you wouldn't have to deny the bid if one come astray.
That's what we're trying to do here, is give these options, so that we don't have to flat out say this, we're not taking the bid, so we can make it work in the budget. Makes sense.
Any other questions?
Any more?
Can't wait for it to get started.
I know, I'm so excited.
What are our options for Third Avenue? So.
Just water main and sewer. And it's not connecting.
Essentially, it'd be option two.
Which is option two. Okay. Option three is full connection, redo the street.
What's the three separate bids, A, B, and C?
As part of, as part of bid A. Oh, yeah.
As part of the roadway bid.
Part of the roadway bid, as part of that.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's really your.
There's really two.
Option two, because one and three are just, we split the costs out, so one and three are the same.
Okay.
Um, so your options are option number two, which is stopping Third Avenue, uh, the roadway, and then option three, part A, B, and C.
Okay. I get the traffic situation for the residents that live there, that, in my opinion, it makes sense to connect the street and make it loopable for fire safety, for park access.
Ambulance.
Amb, yeah, ambulance if necessary, yeah.
Emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles. Um, I support the idea of putting a fence up to limit traffic in the winter time, but it's gonna be used from spring through fall. Obviously, for soccer and football, the parking rack, and, um, as baseball and softball games get scheduled there. So I guess that's option three, be the one that I feel is probably the best for this park in this city.
I think 3A.
3A.
Yes, 3A.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve, um, plan.
I'll just say option three.
Option three.
And that'll include A, B, and C.
Including A, B, and C. At the, uh, with the intent to find cost savings as, as, as we, as we can.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. What more do you need to do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Finally, we're finally there. Months at the moment.
Okay, moving on to.
One more thing, can we get a copy of that option three, because we only got one and two, so.
Can I give them mine? Yeah.
That, there is, it's the same, I'll give you the new layout, but it's, it's all part of.
It's the same option one.
I was gonna say, you should have mine.
Same, yeah, it's the same. It's just a cost opinion, is the only difference.
Okay.
One you have, it's, it's the same thing as the other, but the only difference is the ball diamonds are moved out. Moved back to the north, you see where the old.
They're actually.
Are you saving the golf balls?
All right, moving on to 6B, discussion of possible action in reference to. Okay, um, 6C, public hearing for fiscal year 23 budget. I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Aye, second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are in public hearing about the budgets.
So, pretty much you had the, the same printout as last time, and kind of walked our way through it. Final rate was twelve, uh, twelve point fifty-one per thousand. Um, nothing's changed since we talked about it last time. Uh, we have to get this formally approved by the end of the month and get it submitted to the auditor, so.
Okay.
I don't know, do you have any questions?
And this is less than last year, right?
Correct, yep.
Any questions?
Uh, we're getting a public hearing, any motion to go to public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, and I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 6D, resolution 06 dash 2022, approving fiscal year 23 budget. I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
Make a motion and a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. 6E, discussion of possible action in reference to renewing 28E with Lynn County for snow and maintenance.
All right, so I met with the, uh, superintendent of Lynn County Secondary Roads Department. Also, I met with Travis to go over this. This is pretty much the same, it is the same contract as what's in place currently. The only difference is on page two, um, where it talks about, um, work items that are negotiable separately between either jurisdiction, department heads, and business needs. If proposed work meets, uh, exceeds five thousand, um, it shall be approved by the council board. So basically, anything under five thousand, I can approve, which I can. They just need to get this formally done to, to do it. Plus, uh, we have two new council members, and I'm not sure if any of the old council members were here when this went into place. So, um, just a little bit about it, Travis, you can pipe into. Basically, this is covering, they, they maintain Gillette Lane, um, you have the maps, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, they do South of Road, South of Bud Road, and they do a little bit on Cemetery Road around the curve, out to the city limits. And then in return, we handle Business 30 out to Main Street and down, back in on, uh, Main Street to the area close to the City Shop. It's pretty close to the same, I think we cover a little bit more of theirs than they do, but it's hard on that area where to, where to cut back, just because it's a, a loop. I don't know, Travis, if you wanna talk to how it's worked, but the main piece of this is, we don't have the equipment for Gillette Lane, the gravel portion. And keep in mind, this contract is only for essentially labor. Anything that money gets inputted into, that is outside of this.
Meaning if they.
So if they have, sort of like a culvert, if the culvert's out, we don't have to pay their portion of the culvert. It's just, it's more of a labor trading.
Okay.
You know, they have their maintainer that goes down the road and, and maintains the rock. We have the snowplow that goes down and cleans off the snow, and that's product we're using.
We got so many tons of rock, we got it purchased for the maintain.
Yeah, they don't have to put rock on our.
Yeah.
They don't have to pay for that, and they just do it for us, the work.
Okay.
So that's what.
Thank you for covering this a few weeks ago, so thank you for that.
Okay.
This is more efficient, right?
Yep.
Yeah, oh, and now, it's, I mean, it doesn't make sense for them to get off their beaten route to come over and plow lots of Business 30, and we literally don't have the equipment to gravel, so.
Who, uh, takes care of Lisbon Road specifically from the bypass into Old 30? County?
County.
Okay.
Yep, they turn around right there.
Can we ask them to do a better job? I've heard a lot of complaints about it.
They, so the complaints are, they, they have certain plowing times.
Okay.
Where.
But it's a bigger things first.
Yep, and then residents here are used to us being out frequently versus they've got a bigger piece of the pie to take care of, so.
Oh, yeah, I think you guys are doing a better job.
So.
You guys are just spoiling everybody.
So they're doing the best they can. Now, we have gone out and spread product out on that, when I've been through there, same way with the entrance to U.B. Ridge, which is not covered by the county. We've done that for the school, just because the bus dies in through there and with that ravine right there, so. We try to, if we have available time, to help out, but.
Was, was there any thought of trying to work that into this agreement, that we would maintain this because we would maintain it better? And maybe the county would pick up something else in exchange, or?
You're, you're opening quite a few man hours.
Okay, I retract my statement, but, uh, just wondering, I'm just.
I mean, I'd gladly do it if that's what you guys want, but, I mean, it's gonna, you're gonna add quite a bit of man hours and products.
Well, we're almost done with this winter, so we'll just see how the next winter goes.
And they're still learning too.
Cool view on that?
You can.
They're still. Just like, we're still learning, just like, we're still learning, so. I mean, all this new route stuff's gonna, they're gonna eventually come up something that, all right, this is gonna work best, so.
Okay.
I don't think they're purposely leaving that to hang, saying, well, it's just an access to, who cares? They're not saying that, it's just, every, every, every route's changed, I mean, it's new.
Yeah, it's just prioritization, takes a bit to get to it.
Yep, okay.
All right, um, so we need a motion, uh, to approve the 28E renewal with Lynn County.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Thank you, sir. All right, um, correspondences, anything?
I don't have any.
Okay. Reports, city engineer report, was Dave Davis on there? Dave, you ready?
I'm ready, I don't have anything new to report, um, old business, we're still waiting to hear, from what I understand, from Lynn County on the art of funding. And, um, we have a bid tip, bid levy coming up with DOT on the third Tuesday of the month, and I will review to see if there's anything that looks like it might be favorable for our Highway 30 bypass project.
Okay. Thank you, Dave, anything for Dave, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right. 8B, public works director report.
Uh, we are purchasing UV lights for the UV disinfectant system down there at Sewer Plant. It's about it every three years, they got a shelf life, um, just like your lights in here.
Of course.
So, we're, we're in the process of gonna order those, we just wanted to give you guys the heads up, though.
What's the damage on that? I remember the original system was a couple hundred K.
Yeah, they're about three grand, a little over. Um, we're going with the kit, which has a protective glass sleeve included too. Um, we've had some issues with having to run both banks, so we're gonna delete all that out of the equation with this new sleeve and see if that'll help us.
Don't extend the life of the system?
Well, and get a better, better disinfection. Right now, we're running both banks.
Correct.
To, to achieve what we want, and we originally were shooting for just being able to run one bank and being able to take it out of service, so.
You test the output to ensure that they're effective?
Yes, that's, and we've been working with Dave, and we're still trying to work with Marcy with that too, so this is just a step in getting us to where we need to go. So they obviously need replaced, they're at their shelf life, so.
And they're part of the normal budget?
Yeah, it's, like I said, about every three years, we'll throw, you'll see the line item on, it'll come up, and it'll be UV, and it'll just be a random thing.
True.
With that, um, we're gonna start with the street sweeper here, if the weather keeps staying nice, we'll get some of the sand off the streets, working on potholes. We did work with the DNR on testing for PFOS, I'm not gonna pronounce what it actually is testing. Basically, it's a chemical use for industrial and along with the foaming products for the fire department. So, they picked wells that they thought were susceptible to this, and they picked three, and, which is here at the fire station. They got a no detect, which means they can't test low enough to see if there's anything in there. Keep in mind, they're, they're testing for seventy parts per trillion, so that tells you how little it would actually take.
Wow.
So.
So, a no detect is a good thing, right?
Yes, yep, yeah.
Good, I just wanna make sure that we're, and that I'm following.
No, I know it's been, it's becoming more and more in the news, so I wanted to let the citizens know what was going on.
What's the acronym again?
Uh, PFOS.
PFOS?
Yep.
There's actually a article posted today on KCRG about it.
Central City.
Does Central City have it?
Yeah. And we actually, this would be at City Hall, if anybody would like to come and read the report we got from the DNR.
Okay.
We can burn them off a copy and.
And they tested three wells with no.
No, they tested our well three.
Just one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well numbered, three.
Well numbered.
So, does that mean that chances aren't that up on the alphabet?
This would be the only one that's acceptable to it.
Okay, gotcha.
Because of the party cover and because of the plating over here, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Travis. 8C, parks and rec directly.
I just have a couple things, um, so I told you guys, uh, last week, or not last week, two weeks ago, that we were planning an Easter activity, so that will still be on the seventeenth, um, Easter. I've been working with Joe Genison, um, Community Development Group, and he's gonna get involved with us on that, so that's pretty exciting. He's got all kinds of stuff that he does over in Mount Vernon, I mean, he's gonna bring some of that stuff to Lisbon too. Spring cleanup, uh, for those that are not familiar with that, it's just where all of our league teams, and really anybody who wants to volunteer comes out on a Saturday for a few hours and cleans up the park, um, from field four all the way to the end of the playground equipment. Um, we're twining around with two dates, either April 2nd or April 9th, haven't decided yet, but information will be coming out on that as well. Um, and then last week, I've been working on soccer registrations. We're over a hundred and fifty kids right now. Which is more than we've had, um, in quite some time, so.
Sounds like the highest number I've ever heard.
Yeah. I think we're at a hundred, a hundred and fifty-five right now, and I have a couple more coming in tomorrow to sign up as well, so.
Nice.
All right.
All right, that's all I've got.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
8D, police department report.
Nothing really additional, other than what's in the report, um, get questions?
Thank you. 8E, ambulance director report, um, I don't have a sweep. Okay. 8F, fire chief and city administrators report.
So, I believe I misspoke last time, I thought March was the roundup at Brothers for the Fire Department, but I believe it's gonna be in April. That's where our citizens can go and round up their, their bill, uh, and that, that'll go to the Fire Department, so I believe that's gonna be in April. Uh, we had our fundraiser dance, um, Saturday night out at Tin Roof, formerly Regal Crown. Very successful, had a really good crowd. We are over seven thousand dollars raised already. We are purchasing boots, leather boots, and helmets, so. If you remember, we got the AFG grant, we're still waiting for that, uh, the gear to come in, but, um, once that comes in, we'll have full head-to-toe gear, uh, for everybody, so. And then, I would like to. And then I would like to, on the April eleventh meeting, so not the next meeting, but the following one, at the end of that meeting, I am going to give condemnation awards along with the mayor, to all the firefighters that were out at the grain bin rescue for noticing life, saving lives out there. I'll also ask the families, I've already spoken to two families about coming to that, and then hopefully if we do it at the end of the meeting, we'll have a little reception or some lemonade and cookies or something out on the foyer there in the fire station to, to talk to them. So that's what I'm planning, so April eleventh for that. As far as city administrator stuff goes, Christina Drayton and I was on the webinar for, I think it was presented by the league for grant writing webinar, just different ideas on where to go, how to fill them out. I thought it was very beneficial. They had, some of the talking points were on ideas and things to add to grants that are kind of eye-opening or what people want as far as detail orientation, so I thought that was pretty good. Musco light project, I keep updating on this, I just wanna keep, keep that moving forward. I talked to the electrician. We're hoping either next week or the following week, he wants to make sure that all the frost is out of the ground. We did a couple tests last week. There was still some frost there, but we were able to get through it, I let him know that. So the hope is he gets the electrical ran by the end of the month, and then I'm shooting for that second week of April, second to third week of April as a, to install the lights, so.
All power's getting shot underground?
Correct.
Or trench?
They'll be tied together underground, they'll be in trench. I did speak to Union Pacific. They are gonna have two representatives here at the next meeting to discuss railroad crossings getting blocked, because of your guys' request last time. So they're gonna have two representatives here. They represent this region, which I believe is Nebraska, Iowa, and Minnesota. And also, I'm working with them, taking pictures of the crossing to hopefully get that fixed as well, cause if you haven't been across it, you ought to try it.
Well, today, the crossing arms were down, semis on both ends, no trains going through, and people driving around the crossarms, that, that happened today.
So I was out there today, and I actually called the, their emergency line to let them know. And then shortly after, they did have a representative from the railroad out there waving the cars through. So I don't know how long he was there, and again, I just, I kept on checking on it.
I just have to go by and, and see.
Yeah, so I don't know how long that was, it was sometime this afternoon, I don't know. So anyway, they'll be here on the twenty-eighth. And then I'm also been working with some homeowners in reference to nuisances, so I'm gonna be out and about, now that the budget's kind of all taken care of, I'll be out and about more, meeting with folks and trying to, trying to get that crowd, but that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Council and mayor reports. I'll start, I don't really have anything today, other than just the usual thank yous to the city crews for keeping us safe and clear on the streets and, and parking rack, hundred and fifty soccer players, it's awesome. That's it, thank you.
You're going my way?
You were going your way, why?
Fire hydrant painting, I'd like to have that on the summer agenda for all of our hydrants. If we could figure that out in a nice screaming red, not orange, of red. We've got a couple of hydrants that haven't been done in forever, and frankly, were put in on highway. But I know those haven't been painted at all, but that'd just be nice that we're trying to upgrade the community to get them all the same color. And if we got it, we need a summer help on that or something, perfect job. That's all I got.
Thank you. Rick? John?
The Friends of Lisbon Library are continuing to raise funds for their program for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We had a roundup at Brothers last month. We got fifteen, almost fifteen hundred dollars, just a few dollars short. I was amazed, everybody else is thrilled with that number. Whether the owner kicked in a little extra, I don't know. Next month, we'll have a roundup at Gary's Foods, and we'll be splitting that money with the Mount Vernon Library. So things are going well, I think they have over seventy kids lined up, which is, they're getting books. A little lower than what we had last couple weeks ago, but some of them have graduated, they're five years old, and they don't give books anymore. So we're working with both the daycare agencies in town and with the school to try and get the word out. As soon as a child is born, they can sign up for this and start giving books.
Awesome. What's our, what's our need for seventy kids? How much money dollars are needed for that?
I think eighty runs about twenty-five hundred, so it'd be.
So we need, still need about eight hundred or a thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah, it's twenty-five dollars per kid per year, just for the postage. The Dolly Parton Foundation takes care of the cost of the books.
Awesome.
And it's a great program, it's really gonna help the school. I think the school's gonna help us too, I don't know if that's been passed yet, but we're real happy with the way things are going. Just need to get more kids signed up now.
Sure. Awesome, thank you, John. Sarah, you got anything?
Um, I just wanna take, sorry, the lights look absolutely amazing downtown, now that they're all done. I love it, it really brightens up Lisbon at night. It doesn't look dull, cherry, a Halloween night, every single night. So I love the lights. And there was a great turnout for the Friarman's Dance on Saturday night. Loved seeing a lot of community people there, would like to see even more people come out. I know a lot of people mail in their donations, but definitely something to kind of keep in the back of your mind. If we need them, they're gonna be there for us. So just FYI to the community, support them, because you know that they'll support you when you need. And then Drayton, I love to hear that you are working with Joe Jensen with CDG, I think that's awesome. And hopefully, we can continue with that. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Okay, is there any other business? Meeting adjourned at nine.